Called order, the Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting for June 16th, 2016. Welcome, everybody. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, limited to God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, that is symbol of perfect friendship among the United Americans.
First item on the agenda is to approve the regular meeting agenda. Are there any changes that need to come?
Yes, sir.
(laughing).
I'd like to see if we can go ahead and move 8P, the approval or disapproval of the agreement 816-26, to right under 6B. Okay, so we're gonna, there's a motion to move 8P to immediately following 6B. Is there a second? There's a motion, a proper second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second, to approve the agenda. All those in favor, signal five, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual who would like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on a future agenda. Request forms are available in the County Manager's Office. So at this time, the Commission will stand for public input. Is there any public input today? Going once, twice, no public input. Okay. Minutes. Approve or disapprove the May 10th, 2016 minutes.
The motion to approve the May 10th, 2016, regular meeting minutes.
Can I second?
There's a motion, a second, to approve the May 10th, 2016, regular meeting minutes. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Financial reports. Approve or disapprove the June 13th, 2016 expenditure report. Linda, are you gonna do them again, Randy? Okay. Randy, can you go through that for us?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. In your packet, you have an expenditure report dated June 13th, 2016, for a total sum of That consists of three pay periods, and a payroll total of $659,981.8. And accounts payable portion of $3,140,257.25. To highlight some of the major expenses within that reporting period are a payment for a transit ambulance for the Haila Regional EMS in the amount of $80,000. Engineering services for the Forgotten Veterans Memorial and the Rosedale Road Colonial Project in the amount of $14,000. Payments number seven and eight for the conference center remodel and the roof repair for a total of $133,963. We have some fourth quarter contribution payments for the cooperative extension service and the new expo human services department for the safety net care pool. And architectural services for the two Casa project and the renovations that will take place here in our building. And some auto, audio and visual equipment for this room, the amount of $10,000. Everything looks fine, if you have any questions?
Well, congratulations. There's a motion.
Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the June 13th, 2016 expenditure report.
There's a motion, a second, to approve the June 13th, 2016 expenditure report. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll move to the amended item, 8P. Approve or disapprove agreement A16-26, First Amendment to Agreement A15-22 between the Grant County and High Desert Humane Society. Heidi, do you want to go over that for us?
Thank you very much for making that change. I don't really have a report to offer, I just wanted to be available if there were any questions on our request. We did ask for a slight increase in the annual amount. All other parts of the contract would remain the same.
Okay. Okay. Motion to approve A16-26 is read.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, to approve A16-26, the First Amendment to Agreement A15-22. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you, Heidi.
All right. Next item on the agenda is new business. Approve or disapprove a proclamation recognizing the 2016 New Mexico 4H Shooting Sports Contest High Point Hunting Team. Denisha, are you reading the proclamations today?
Yes.
Yes.
Honoring the 2016 New Mexico 4H Shooting Sports High Point Hunting Team. Whereas the goal of the 4H Shooting Sports Program is youth development, and whereas through participation in firearm safety training and shooting sports activities, young men and women are given the opportunity to learn responsibility, sportsmanship, self-discipline, and other qualities critical to the development of productive citizens. And whereas 4H Shooting Sports is a national program with over 300,000 young people taking part, thus making it one of the largest shooting education programs in the United States. And whereas the Grant County 4H Shooting Sports Program had a successful season, capturing the High Point Hunting Team title at the State Shoot Health, May 5th through 8th, 2016, at the NRA Whittington Center in Vado, New Mexico. And whereas the members of the 2016 High Point Hunting Team are Riley Bradson, Ty Dalton, Jordan Gonzalez, and Trent Caston. And whereas these dedicated and talented young men, along with their coaches and parents, spent countless hours at practices. And whereas the team will be traveling to Grant Island, Nebraska, to compete in the 4H Shooting Sports National Championship. And whereas the Grant County Board of Commissioners wishes to recognize the accomplishment of these young men, now therefore be it resolved by the County Board of Commissioners that June 16th, 2016, be declared as the 2016 Grant County State Champion Hunting Team Day.
Thank you, Denisha. Today, we have Jessica Swap, our new Grant County Extension Agent. Do you want to introduce the boys and have anything to say about them?
Hi, my name's Jessica Swap, and I'm the new Grant County Extension Agent. And I'm very happy to be here today to present these boys as the state champion hunting team. It's not just one discipline that they have to master. They have to master several different disciplines and compete against all other students or kids that are involved in 4H around the state. So they've really worked really hard to get to where they are, and they're going to proudly represent us at the national competition in Nebraska. So we're really, really proud of them.
Okay.
And, sorry, the team consists of Riley Bradson, Trent Caston, Jordan Gonzalez, and Ty Dalton.
Thank you. So can I get a motion to approve or disapprove this proclamation?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the proclamation recognizing the 2016 New Mexico 4H Shooting Sports Contest High Point Hunting Team. Congratulations.
Second. There's a motion, a second, to approve the proclamation recognizing the 2016 New Mexico 4H Shooting Sports Contest High Point Hunting Team. Is there any discussion on that motion?
I'd just like to say congratulations. You know, we used to shoot competition with fellows and all, and when you hit that high competition and come out successful, it's pretty exciting, guys. And my son took hunter safety with one of you also. I mean, it's just a great accomplishment, guys, and keep up the good work, keep up the discipline.
We're very proud of you. You represent us well. Thank you very much. And good luck in your next competition. Further discussion?
That's it.
Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. If you guys will come up here, and Mr. Bradson, I know you've been coaching, we'll take a picture. High School State Champions for wrestling, Coach Luis Alvarado. Denisha, can you read that proclamation for us?
Yes. Honoring the 2016 New Mexico State High School State Champion Wrestlers. Whereas the Silver High School Wrestling Team participated in the 2016 New Mexico Activities Association State Wrestling Competition held in Rio Rancho, New Mexico, on February 19th and 20th, 2016. And whereas the Silver High School Wrestling Team's performance earned them 176.5 points at the state tournament in Class 4A category, placing them third. And whereas the Silver High School Wrestling is coached by Luis Alvarado, with assistance from Juan Carlos Minas. And whereas freshman Zeke Marcus, 113-pound class, sophomore Benny Vega, 152-pound class, senior Ethan Lucero, 160-pound class, senior Paul Modoya, 182-pound class, and senior Ryan Morales, 220-pound class, captured the individual state championship title. And whereas all members of the Silver High Wrestling Team not only be commended for their athletic accomplishments, but for their hard work, dedication, and outstanding sportsmanship, now therefore be it resolved by the governing body of the County of Grant that congratulations and recognition is extended to the Silver High School Wrestling Team for their superior talent and success.
And Mr. Alvarado, you want to, here?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah. I know, I saw you, I'd seen him earlier, but...
We just want to thank the County Commissioners for, you know, all their support, and I have Zeke Marcus here, who showed up today for us to represent the Silver High Wrestling Team, and just want to congratulate him and the rest of the team. I'd like to also congratulate the softball team for winning their sixth state title.
Good job. Can I get a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion. To approve the proclamation recognizing the 2016 Silver High School State Championship Wrestling Team. Congratulations, guys. You always make us proud. I told him, I told him, you know, in 1963, I wrestled, and I was going to show him some moves. We used to do head butts and Pokemon Eye and stuff like that, but Coach said, "No, don't do that."
Can I get a second?
Signal five, second.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Just want to say congratulations, Coach Alvarado, you run a very good program over there, and thank you for all your time and dedication to these young men.
Absolutely. Well, I take a little bit of athletes here. I coached Zeke and Paul corner footballs.
That's what it was. That's what it was.
And I gave him some of those moves.
You didn't know that, Coach, huh? He used to run the rest of us down. That's it.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Can you guys come up for a picture? Champions, Denisha.
Thank you. Honoring the 2016 New Mexico Silver High School State Champion Softball Team. Whereas the governing body of the County of Grant, having learned of the accomplishments of the Silver High School Lady Colt Softball Team, does hereby extend its recognition. And whereas the Lady Colt Softball Team in the Silver Consolidated School District in Silver City, New Mexico, earned the state championship in the Class 4A category of the New Mexico Activities Association 2016 State Softball Tournament, held in Rio Rancho, New Mexico, on May 11th through the 14th, 2016. And whereas the Lady Colts earned their sixth state championship. And whereas the Lady Colts and their coaches are to be commended for their demonstration of dedication, commitment, and passion for the sport of softball. Now therefore be it resolved by the governing body of the County of Grant that congratulations and recognition, excuse me, is extended to the Silver High School Ladies Softball Team for their outstanding athletic accomplishments.
Denisha, can I get a motion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the proclamation recognizing the 2016 Silver High School Softball State Champions.
Second. There's a motion, a proper second, to approve the 2016 Silver High School Softball State Champions proclamation. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Deja vu. That's all I can say is congratulations.
I understand, I'm gonna have to get a bigger trophy case. That's good.
Congratulations to all you girls.
Good job, ladies.
And coaches, that's awesome. I'd like to take some props for little Miss McDonald there. She played for me in my six-year-old, six-year-old, twelve-year-old boys team, and she was better than most of those boys. And she's still awesome, and she's just improving every year. It's been a pleasure to see all of you guys play. I've been able to see you all play since most of you all were real little, through little league and through softball, being up there at the state tournament. So good job and congratulations, and hats off to you, coaches. Good job. Good job.
Congratulations. You know, you make us proud every year. It's just great to travel around the state and say from, you know, from Silver City, New Mexico, state champions. And almost state champions. So that's great. Thank you.
Further discussion? Coach?
You've got a lot to say today, right?
Not that much. First of all, let me thank the Commissioners. I also want to congratulate the other champions that are being recognized here today. The wrestling team, obviously, the 4H Shooting Club, that's really neat, because that's kind of a new one on the deal. And also the girls' golf team, they did an outstanding job. Let me talk just a little bit about our team. Obviously, some of our kids couldn't be here this morning, they had other responsibilities that they have to take care of. But I do want to thank you guys again, from the bottom of my heart. This is outstanding that you would recognize our kids and our community, and I appreciate it, and I'm sure they feel the same way. So with that being said, thanks again.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Coach, you've been here so often, you know the drill. You've been here as many times as Gabriel and I. This is our sixth proclamation we've given, right?
We've got two years left, Coach. We've got two years left. I hope I have two more ladies. Congratulations. Thank you. I hope I have two more ladies. Congratulations. We are not done recognizing our outstanding youth of Grant County. The next item on the agenda is to approve or disapprove a proclamation recognizing the 2016 Silver High School Girls Golf Team. Denisha?
Honoring the 2016 New Mexico Silver High State Champion Golf Team. Whereas the Silver High School Golf Team participated in the 2016 New Mexico Activities Association State Golf Tournament, held in Roswell, New Mexico, on May 9th and 10th, 2016. And whereas the Silver High School Golf Team is coached by James Begay. And whereas the Silver High School Girls Golf Team shooting a two-day gross score of 737 at the state tournament in Class 4A category, placing them first, with individual scoring from Brooklyn Renteria of a 191, Chelsea Medina of a 183, Esmeralda Melendez of a 194, Rianna, Rianna Armio of a 181, and Sage Begay of a 194. And whereas all members of the Silver High Golf Team not only be commended for their athletic accomplishments, but for their hard work, dedication, and outstanding sportsmanship. Now therefore be it resolved by the governing body of the County of Grant that congratulations and recognition is extended to the Silver High School Golf Team for their superior talent and success.
Thanks, Denisha. So this time, I take a motion?
Motion to approve proclamation recognizing the 2016 Silver High School Girls Golf Team State Championship.
Signal five, second.
So there's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Coach Begay.
Well, I know Coach Begay looks a lot younger than me, but we actually graduated together. I know nothing about golf, so you got all those props for yourself.
Good morning. I just want to thank the County Commission to recognize these young ladies. They've been working really hard throughout the season, and this is our first state championship in girls' golf for the high school, so I'm very proud of that. And then I also want to thank my assistant coach, also helping, it's my daughter, Gabby Begay. And this is Brooklyn Anthony Esme Melendez and Chelsea Medina. And we're missing two young ladies also, one's in Washington for National History Day, Rianna and Armio. And then my daughter, Sage Begay, is also on the team, but she's working right now also. Again, I'd like to thank you for the recognition, and then I also want to congratulate the softball team, the 4H, and the wrestling team also. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Commissioners?
Just congratulations, pretty awesome.
Yeah, it's interesting to see Mike Medina back there, you know, I remember whenever he used to get all the extra clubs and stuff for Christmas, and I understand now his daughter, Chelsea, can beat him. Is that right, Chelsea?
You know, when I saw him in the back of the room, I thought maybe we were on jury duty.
Well, congratulations, and hopefully I could see you all out there, and maybe y'all could show me some tricks one of these days.
Great job, George, and you won't be able to show me, because I cannot play golf. You don't want me out there.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Come on up.
You know, about three times a year, we get to recognize the youth of Grant County at the end of each sports cycle, and it's always a pleasure to do it. There's so many tremendous young people in our county that we just got to keep, just cheerleading them on. They need to continue doing great things, so I really...
You know, you said this before, and I've heard Commissioner Romo say the same thing. This is the best part of this job, is meeting and recognizing our youth in this county, so great job. Congrats.
Okay, with that, if you guys don't want to hang around, I understand, because the rest of this is just watching the sausage made, and it's not real fun.
Watching the sausage made? Is that what we do?
Yeah, this is pretty grueling here. Next item on the agenda is to approve or disapprove Agreement A16-17, Agreement Between Aging and Long-Term Services and Grant County Senior Center to renovate and equip the Silver City Senior Center.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the Agreement A-16-17.
Second. There's a motion, a second, to approve Agreement A16-18. Second. There's a motion, a second, to approve A16-18. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Agreement A16-19, Agreement with the County of Santa Fe for inmate confinement.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the Agreement A-16-19.
Second. There's a motion, a second, to approve A16-19. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Agreement Number A16-20, Agreement between the State and the Mexico Department of Finance and Administration, Local Government Division, in Grant County for the local Driving While Intoxicated Grant Program.
Motion to approve A16-20.
Second. There's a motion, a second, to approve A16-20. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Agreement Number A16-21, Agreement with the United States Department of Agricultural, Animal, and Plant Health Inspection Service, Wildlife Services for Work and Financial Plan, from July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Agreement A-16-21.
Second. There's a motion, a second, to approve A16-21. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Agreement Number A16-21, Agreement with the United States Department of Agriculture, Animal, and Plant Health Inspection Service, Wildlife Services for Work and Financial Plan, from July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Agreement A-16-21.
Second. There's a motion, a second, to approve A16-21. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Agreement A16-19, Agreement with the County of Santa Fe for inmate confinement.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the Agreement A-16-19.
Second. There's a motion, a second, to approve A16-19. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Agreement Number A16-20, Agreement between the State and the Mexico Department of Finance and Administration, Local Government Division, in Grant County for the local Driving While Intoxicated Grant Program.
Motion to approve A16-20.
Second. There's a motion, a second, to approve A16-20. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Agreement Number A16-21, Agreement with the United States Department of Agricultural, Animal, and Plant Health Inspection Service, Wildlife Services for Work and Financial Plan, from July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Agreement A-16-21.
Second. There's a motion, a second, to approve A16-21. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Agreement Number A16-22, Agreement between Grant County DWI Program and Chris Helgert for Recovery Management Center.
Motion to approve Agreement A16-22.
Second. There's a motion, a second, to approve A16-22. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Agreement Number A16-23, Agreement between Grant Approve or disapprove Agreement Number A-1623, Agreement between Grant County DWI Program and Airline Arlene, excuse me, Arlene Hogland for Professional Services Contract.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Agreement A-1623.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve A-1623. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Agreement Number A-1624, This is a memorandum of understanding between Grant County DWI Program and the Silver City Police Department for Grant Number 17-J-G-10 to provide certain work.
Motion to approve Agreement A-1624.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve A-1624. Is there any discussion on that motion?
I'd just like to say thanks to Cindy McLean. I know she's not here, but keep, keep on top of all these different types of grants and all out there for DUI purposes. It's very much needed and we thank her for all the hard work.
The other thing is, as we well know in the commission, is that she is the go-to person in the state of New Mexico and so she has made us proud. Good job.
Any further discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Agreement Number A-1625, This is the first amendment to a professional services agreement for Tracy Gonzalez.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the Agreement A-1625.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve A-1625. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Agreement Number A-1627, This is an amendment to an agreement for funds paid through the restorative justice for Robert Torres.
Motion to approve Agreement A-1627.
Right, second.
There's a motion and a second to approve A-1627. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Agreement A-1628, This is an amendment to the agreement for funds paid through the restorative justice for Laura Ramarans.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Agreement A-1628.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve A-1628. Is there any discussion on that motion? Please forgive me if I mispronounced your name. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Agreement Number A-1629, Amending, Amendment to Existing Contract for Chris Helgert, DVA, the Recovery Management Center to reflect the $11,000.
Motion to approve Agreement A-1629.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve A-1629. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to bids, Approve or Disapprove Bid B-1514 Forgotten Veterans Memorial Warehouse. This will be out at the Paton Park. Charlene, what, make, go through that bid one more time and make sure we get this motion correct on what we need to do.
Yes, sir. We are recommending award of the base bid in the amount of $95,455 to Sacaton Construction. We bid the base bid plus several additive alternates, which because of the amount of the grant, they were unable to, to award all of those. So the, the base bid will construct the basic building.
And that was, that was legislative?
It was a legislative capital appropriation.
And it was how much?
$125,000.
And we're doing $101,000 with total grocery, grocery receipts, okay?
Yes, sir.
Uh, do we have to revert the rest of that or?
The rest of it paid for professional services for the-
Oh, so the professional services, that's, that's what we have left is basically, all right, we're not having to put anything into our general fund?
We actually helped them out with the professional services and the engineering with the professional services line item in the planning department, so that they were able to at least get this much done.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Bid B-1514 to Sacaton Construction as explained by the manager.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve B-1514 to Sacaton Construction for the total amount of $101,719.23. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We have one resolution today. It is budget adjustments. Randy, you went through them thoroughly on Tuesday. Do you have any, anything?
I don't have anything else.
Okay.
Motion to approve Resolution R-1621.
Right, second.
There's a motion and a second to approve R-1621. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. At this time, we will have the elected officials report. And I guess we'll start with Kevin. He's pitching today, it looks like.
The poor sheriff thinks.
You got the better end of that stick.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we've been very busy. The month of May, we responded to 598 calls for service. The deputies wrote 159 reports and they investigated 14 vehicle collisions. In our Civil Division, they delivered nine domestic violence protection orders, served 133 notices, delivered 267 subpoenas, 104 summons, and eight writs. And for transports, they traveled for 13 transports at 5,901.4 miles. Want to give a quick report on the rodeo. We, everything went real well. We got a lot of positive feedback from the citizens attending the rodeo. We do although have overtime issues because of it, because we had to provide the public safety and do traffic control and it did cause us some overtime. We would like to see possibly the rodeo do like the Tour of the Gila does and find a way to reimburse overtime for the overtime hours there at work. And I know the Tour of the Gila is able to do that every year. Currently, right now, we're fully staffed. Other than training of new hires and we have one deputy that's out on FMLA. And in August, we have two deputies that are going to be going to Santa Fe to the, to attend the academy. And that's all I have. Other than I want to thank our staff for all their hard work and everything they've done to help with the downfalls as far as manpower. And once we get these guys trained, we should be good.
Well, we're so glad that you're fully staffed, so that's, that's huge for, for the county. Good job.
Thanks, Kevin. Steve?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners? I gave you three pages trying to emphasize the, how busy we've been. The first one shows a month, the month from the 19th of April through the 9th of May, we had collected little over half a million dollars for the county. And in one day, the second report, in one day, May the 10th, we received $286,484, which was about half of what we had done the previous month. And the last report that we've collected $375,708 in our office up until yesterday. We continue to be trying to work on the list, notifying our people that are delinquent, trying to work it out with them to get in here before the end of the month. We try to, you know, our hands are tied as far as what the state requires us to do. So we, we do encourage anybody that has any 13 taxes out there at a minimum to try to take care of those so that their names won't go onto the list that the state comes back in and, and works to. The state did have a tax sale in our county. Unfortunately, but there's good and bad in it, I guess. Out of 55 properties that they initially listed and notified the property owners, they're in, they ended up selling 19 parcels. The good part of that is that we will get those parcels back on the current tax rolls. Plus, the sales of those 19 parcels were $28,096.14 more than the minimum bid that was required to pay the delinquent taxes and the penalties and interest. So those property owners, some of, most of those will actually get some money back. So, I mean, that's kind of good, but the bad part is that they lose their property. But, so, we're not sure exactly, this is the second sale that we've had within, you know, a short period, but we just don't know when they'll be coming back. So, again, I said, you know, anybody that, if they even think that they might be owing 13 taxes, give us a call. We have sent the notices out and they, they have to the end of the month to get that taken care of, so. Unless there's any questions or?
Any questions? Can you report? Can you report? Thanks. Thank you, Steve. Mr. Assessor?
Good morning, and I'd like to start off and congratulate all the individuals that ran for office in these primary elections. All congratulations. I'd like to start off with my staff. I really appreciate my staff. We've been working quite diligently on our reappraisal and it's quite interesting because we're bouncing all over the county at this moment and we are looking for a couple of part-time enumerators so they can pick up data. And we do have one appraisal position open at this moment. Once again, we, we are quite working on our reappraisal and also doing our functions here in the assessor's office. I would like to make a comment here that on June 15th, we have to certify our valuations. And by, by law, it has to be in by June 15th. And I would like to run a few numbers so you'd be okay with the county. For starters, on the base value of the non-residential site, we actually, the base value of last year was $407,006,31, and that was 2015 base value. This year for the residential property, our base value, unprotested value is $410,513,125. On the non-residential side, base value for 2015 is $153,950,405. For the unprotested value on the non-residential side is $153,000, $153,282,93. And once again, it's this taxable valuation. Multiply that by three and that's your full value. The Soli combined under our Property Tax Division threes, our total unprotested value, residential and non-residential is $53,795,218. Compared to last year was $561,001,012,736. So we are up on our valuations on residential and the non-residential. Our state assessed property last year was $50 million taxable and for 2016, our taxable value is $52 million, and that's unprotested value. Have any questions, Commissioners? Once we set these values, it's sent to Department, Property Tax Division, they look over the numbers, and then that's how we arrive the rate for 2016. We won't get that information until September, so pretty much estimate your property values from last year's tax rates and you're pretty close on what the property taxes are. Any questions?
So far.
I will sit and discuss all this information with our county manager and anytime there's a number that comes by, I, I sit down and I give it to our county manager. One of the things is, we got through with our protest period and we had close to about 150 protests and they were pretty much resolved. We did compile pretty much all our numbers, not only on the commercial side, but also the non-residential side. I will be sending a couple of individuals to training in July. They're going to take the course, War with the Fundamental of the Roadster Praiser's and it's going to be Tracy, that burns scent, and Laura, Lauren Zunez. It's actually a whole semester of classes, one week, and then you take a four-hour exam after that. I'm also taking, sending my chief deputy, Jennifer Barazza, and let me tell you, she has done an exceptional job with our state assessed property. Whenever you got a, whenever you can find $150 out of $157 million to balance out, that's Jennifer Barazza, let me know that. She is wonderful and has done a really good job at her numbers. She's going to be taking the income approach to valuation and that's through the international, the international associations of assessing officers. Once again, it's been a wonderful ride there in the assessor's office. I have a complete new staff and we spend time in and time out just training and being out in the field. And I do stand for questions.
I just want to thank you for sitting down with me yesterday and discussing all this. I appreciate your time.
Um, Commissioners, my door is wide open and I really appreciate you coming up and asking for numbers and, and not just only my certification, but also my abstracts and so on, so thank you very much.
Good job, Rowell. Any updates on the senior Olympics? Come on.
Hey, matter of fact, I'm glad you brought that up.
Since you asked.
Since you asked. No, matter of fact, a couple of days ago. Well, matter of fact, Thursday, I showed up, matter of fact, I've been down for about a month, had a little foot injury, and I showed up to play. Not to play, but I was there as a, as a, as a spectator sitting on, you know, on the bleachers. And I guess Team Morningstar was playing the merchants or the boomers, the 55s and the 65s. So they needed one more guy, so guess what? Commissioner Ron was ahead, I had a stand-up in bat, so I was four for five, so I did pretty good. But they actually had a couple of games and we had a lot of fun and I do believe they're going to have a banquet in August. But everything's rocking and I, I want to give a big hand to Fred Baca and he's done a heck of a good job with senior Olympics. But thanks for bringing that up.
They created a lot of excitement there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Especially when you see an 80-year-old late to 1,400 meters, you get excited.
The only thing I'd like to see change is us 70-plus guys, is I'd like to see allowing us 20 players so that we, because we don't cover the ground as quick as you guys and that gives us a shorter distance to run, okay?
Funny to say, I played with a team from Scottsdale, Arizona, and they're the 60s, 70-plus guys. I just hang out with them and I've been playing with them for the last five years, from the 60s to the 70s. And they actually do that. They have probably about 10, 15 guys out there in the field. They're tough. But thank you very much. And once again, I'll get all these numbers over to the county manager and once again, we will be diligent on this reappraisal and we are picking up quite a lot of value there. This is my, thank you very much. You've had a challenging day.
Okay, Mr. Commissioners?
I wanted to take a moment to thank my staff. They did an outstanding job for the primary election. A lot of months of planning go away for just one day. Top-notch staff that we have in that office, we did diligently and hard for me. The other thing I need to report is that on June 30th is the filing date for any independent candidates or minor party candidates or riding candidates that wish to run for any of the county offices. That'd be signed up in my office from 9:00 to 5:00. So if anybody has any questions, call our office and we'll get you going up. And they did have to be either an independent or minor party prior to the proclamation the governors sent out in January. So if you have any questions, just call my office and we'll be more than happy to go over that with you. Other than that, I don't have any.
Thank you very much. So we'll move to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner?
Well, first of all, congratulations to all the candidates that ran. It's, everyone's a winner when you run for office. I know it's really hard and, but there's only one person that can win, so congratulations to all and congratulations to all the ones that did get elected and good luck to the ones that are running for this next general election. County Clerk's Office, good job. I mean, I called and got results from you all, I think by 8:20. That was, that was pretty awesome. You have a great staff. think by 8:20, that was, that was pretty awesome, uh, you have a great staff, um, great, great girls, you know, so, including yourself. Alrighty, but I, I really don't have much, just, uh, thank everyone that's, that's working for the county and, and for doing all the great things that you do for, for the public. That's it.
Commissioner?
I'd just echo, uh, what, uh, Commissioner Hulon must have stated, uh, and I'd also thank the Grand County Beat, uh, for the election results. It was really nice to be able to get most of the results before I go to bed, which is pretty early, so, good job. Uh, my report on, uh, 5/24, I had a very, very interesting meeting, in fact, I picked up another, I think, a program that carried me past being a, a commissioner and that was at HMS, uh, I had a meeting with HMS, uh, reference to a program called ACE, A-C-E, Adverse Childhood Experiences, uh, uh, mechanisms by which adverse childhood experiences influence health and well-being throughout the, the child's lifespan from conception to death. The town of Silver City and us once again have, have come together to work on this program through Mayor Karen, uh, Ken Ladner and the county, uh, has come together to sponsor two local citizens to attend a training, uh, in the state of Washington on this important topic so they can come back and share it with the rest of, of the community. I've got some copies here if anyone needs that, the media or anyone else, so that you can, um, uh, read on it. Also, uh, May and June, uh, had meetings with Tucasa, two of the major, uh, things we've been working on, of course, is the, uh, Advisory Board, uh, we've all got that done, we'll be bringing it in front of the commission soon. And then the entrance flow chart, uh, we've been contacting the different entities and offices so that they will be aware. I see our DA here will be meeting with the defense bar and the DA's office soon to let you know what we are doing and so that you can have input in it also. Uh, 6/9 had an NMAC Criminal Justice Committee meeting, we discussed issues impacting, impacting, uh, our counties, in particular, uh, the, uh, Sheriff's Office and then of course, uh, some, uh, financial issues with the county and the state of New Mexico. On 6/11, attended the Gila Valley EMS celebration of 30 years of service, let me tell you what, for battery, they had three tables full of goodies, all homemade. Man, I haven't had to eat a, a sweet since, so I really enjoyed that and I, I congratulate them and thank them for, uh, inviting me. Um, also, on 6/15, we had a dispatch meeting, discussing, discussing their issues, so that's my report.
Thank you. Okay, um, I want to thank Rob, I think you did a great job on the election, it's always nice to have one of the, the best county clerks in the, in the state and it's every election, you've just been stellar. Um, congratulate all the candidates that ran and all the candidates that won. However, I do feel as though, uh, it's my duty as an elected official that is, that is termed out and has no political aspirations whatsoever after this, to clear up some misconceptions. I don't have a dog in this fight, I don't care which side you're on, but the fact is, this commission has no authority whatsoever to create a diversion or not create a diversion at all. That money from the AWSA came through the Secretary of Interior per the New Mexico Legislature to the Interstate, uh, Interstate Stream Commission and the CAP entity that was formed last year is charged with doing that. Therefore, the commission, whether they have a seat at that table or not, the CAP entity is still going to survive, they are still charged, uh, with the act and the subsequent agreements, uh, to spend that money as they see fit. They are, uh, that's through the Interstate Stream Commission, as I mentioned, the legislature made them the fiscal agent, so this commission has no authority to divert or not to divert at all. And if anybody says that after I've, I've told you, then you're being disingenuous with your public and I hope you're not like that, either way, because I've heard both sides. Um, I just felt as though it was very important that I brought that out and I made sure, and if, if anybody from the press doesn't understand what I just said, I'd be happy to meet with you and go through it line by line. So, with that being said, uh, I didn't give the manager any time to tell us anything, but do you have anything today? Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to say thank you for bringing that up because, yeah, there was a lot of misconceptions out there and, uh, people need to know that, uh, we don't control what's going to happen with that diversion. Sure, I'm happy to say that I do support it, but, uh, we have no say-so on what's going to happen unless we sit on the cap and, uh, that's why we're on there, that way we can put our two cents into whatever's going to happen, whatever's going to take place with those monies. So misconceptions need to go out the window and, and the truth needs to be put out.
Yeah, I just, just yesterday, I got a, a gentleman asked me, he says, Ron, what about the hundreds of millions of dollars that is being spent on offices and employment out of that money? I said, what? It's just bad information is out there, it's just, it's terrible and, uh, it's just important to give the facts to the people and let them make a decision, but the key word there is facts, true facts.
Unfortunately, some, some groups did run on untrue facts, but, uh, neither here nor there. Good luck to everyone, I applaud everyone that's running.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
You got it.
Second. All those in favor, signal five, say aye. Aye.